Well, if anybody's got a hearing aid or something like that, it's always helpful to have the winks on. And we've got about another 30 seconds, maybe somebody else will come in. You ready Lori?
Yeah.
I'm ready.
Okay. Everybody's ready. Okay. Welcome tonight. My name is Carolyn White. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of the Park Rapids area. And I've been a member since, uh, 2010 when I retired from being a school teacher. So, I guess it's a natural role. The League of Women Voters of Park Rapids in Minnesota is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase the understanding of our major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. And if you need to read more about us, there's, it's written in the program tonight, or talk to one of the League members later. Thank you all for attending tonight's event. We also want to thank the participants for taking time to be with us. Thanks to the Park Rapids Lake area Chamber volunteers and our member volunteers, Luanne Herdluff for being the timer, and thanks to the Monaga School District to providing the media center and the cookies and the coffee. So, housekeeping details. There are refreshments. You can go and get up and get them at any time. And please stay afterwards and help us eat them up. Also, turn off your cell phones. Restrooms are located out this door and to the left. And also, we appreciate any and all donations to help us put on these programs. The candidates have received the ground rules for this event. And the audience, as audience members, we ask you to remain as quiet as possible so that everyone may be heard. Please hold your applause until the forum has ended so the candidates will have all their time to answer your questions. The League will determine which questions will be asked and will attempt in good faith to cover areas of interest expressed by the audience. Questions will be screened and similar questions will be consolidated so that as many topics as possible can be covered. No questions of personal nature, or that that's inappropriate, or hostile, or unclear in intent will be asked. Or questions that aren't relevant to the school board position. If you do have a question in the audience, you got a little card when you signed in and just hold it up and Carter or Florence will come around and pick it up. And they will screen the questions and then they'll bring it up to me. And we had some that were submitted by email, so I've got a stack of questions to start with. It's our goal to have a civil discussion on these issues and give you the information you need when you go to vote. Okay. So, we have our candidates tonight. Participating incumbents are Andrea Haberin, Katie Howard, Derwin Tomfrey, and challenger Bob Smith. And we need to wrap up questioning candidates no later than about 7:50 and allow each one a two-minute wrap-up. And we will start with a two-minute introduction. The way I'll have cards to tell you the time. And I have a chart that will tell me how to rotate the questions so that somebody's starting first each time and it's not the same person. But we will start the introductions with Andrea, then Katie, then Bob, and then Derwin. So, Andrea, you can go first.
First, I want to thank everybody for coming. It was a beautiful day and a really lovely evening, and I know there are lots of other things that you could be doing. So, I appreciate you becoming involved with the political process and being here tonight. My name is Andrea Haberin. This is my fourth year on the school board. I have been the school board chair for the past two years, vice-chair for the year before that. I feel that since I've been on the board, this board has learned how to work together and we've been able to run calm, efficient, organized board meetings. I realize that some of the decisions I make aren't always popular, but people usually appreciate the time and the amount of research I put into the decisions I make and then the discussion that follows. I have kids in the school district and my aim is to continue to speak for them and all other students in our district. I believe that they deserve a solid education that will teach them to become successful adults. I thank you for supporting my voice on the school board.
Katie?
Hello. My name is Katie Howard. I've served on our school board for the last two years. It's been quite an honor and a privilege and a very big learning curve. And I feel like after two years, I finally feel like I know what I'm doing. And a little bit about me, I have nine children. Five are currently in the school right now. Dame graduated last, well, almost two years ago. And I have three little girls at home, so I'm pretty busy with that, otherwise. But I'm really honored to have been elected last year to be a part of the school board, and I like to make the decisions that affect our kids.
Well, good evening. I too want to thank you for taking the time to be here and to investigate. This is, I believe, either my second or third time trying to run for the school board. I moved into the community 12 years ago to pastor the Assemblies of God Church here in town. I'm interested in education. I am wanting to work with the board members that are elected to do what's best for our students and for our community. I'm often asked, or have been asked a few times, why do I want to run? Well, I love kids, and I love history, and I love education. I've committed my life to it, both in the religious field for 35 years and also in the education. I started out bus-driving and substitute teaching from day one. I've always pastored in rural communities, so I have used this as a supplement to my income. I love teaching. History is kind of my forte, but of course, as a short-term sub, I do all the subjects. I'm just interested in where our country is headed, not just in education, but in a lot of different areas. And I just want to make a difference, hopefully serving on this school board. And so, I just thank you for that.
Okay. Helen?
For those of you who do not know me, I'm Derwin Tomfrey. I've been on this board for a few years. Currently, I serve as the vice-chair. A little bit about me, I've been, was born and raised here. I graduated from Monaga. My wife and I own a company, southwest of town called Omega Hartwoods. We've been in business for 25 years. I guess I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I think this is, I wish there'd been more people, but this is a very good opportunity for people to have a chance to see what people stand for and where they're coming from. I guess the reason I'm running again too is I think every one of us is passionate about education. To dedicate your time to a position like this, you have to be all-in. Through the years, we went through some pre-trialing times. There's been some big issues, especially related to the new addition that finally got passed last year. I think that's going to be a nice addition to the building of facilities to help our students move forward. And I'm looking forward to some of the questions for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for our first question, we're going to start with Katie, and then go to Bob, and Derwin, and then Andrea. Okay. Why do you want to be on the school board, and what do you hope to accomplish? Katie, you get to start.
Why do I want to be on the school board? I want to be on the school board to make a difference for our kids and our community. I believe that what we do for our kids today means there are leaders for tomorrow. So, I really want to see a lot of things come into Monaga that are going to influence kids in a positive way. I know that, like, we are doing a lot of different programming in our schools now that will help our kids that when they graduate, they can go out into the workforce and be a positive influence in that way. I just, it's, I'm really passionate about it. And I really think that those, like I said, those that we educate today will be our leaders tomorrow, so we really got to take this seriously, what we do.
Okay. Bob? Do you want me to read the question again?
No. I think I kind of covered it somewhat in my opening, you know, that we're all passionate about education because the bottom line is, education makes a difference. It makes a difference in your life. It makes a difference in your earning income. And, you know, it just rounds out the person. I want to see Monaga students strive in whatever field, whether that course is on to a four-year college degree, or a technical school, or, you know, some kind of, you know, of work ethic that they can sustain. I want their education to be balanced and rounded. As a pastor, I've had people ask me, "Well, why are you running? Christians shouldn't run." Well, why not? You know, I'm a part of this community and I'm not looking to make Monaga a Christian school by any means. I'm working, or I want to work if elected, with whoever else is on the board for what is best for our community and what is best for our students. Thank you.
Andrea?
The first question was, why would I like to be on the board? I'll have to say this, and I've heard it from every other school board member who's ever served on a board, whether it's our school board or around the state, when I've visited with other school board members. When you get on the board, there's a learning curve. It takes a little while to understand how the process works, how policies are made, how decisions are made. It's not the same as going home and saying, "You know what? I want to do something different today. I'm going to change my household." The school board takes a little while. So, being as, this is my fourth year, I feel like I've learned how the board works and how to make it work efficiently. And I'd like to continue the open discussions that we've had on our board. The second part is, what do I hope to accomplish? One of the things that we've done in the past couple of years is been able to pass the school addition. I would like to see that addition finished. I feel like that's an accomplishment that all people that have been involved, whether on the board or in the community, they're really kind of proud of. The second thing is, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll get back to it. Okay. Next question, we'll start with, oh, oops.
I haven't had a chance to.
Oh, you haven't? Okay. I brushed your name off too fast. Sorry.
I'll make it short and sweet.
Yeah.
Anyway, I guess the reason I'd like to be on, I run for the school board again would be to be part of the process of building, the building blocks that create a well-known child, and that would include hiring the right administration, teachers, forming the right curriculums. With the changing technologies that we're confronted with each year, I think we need to be on our toes and make sure we're supplying the tools for these kids that can take with them when they go out into the real world, trying to find a job and support their families. I think when it comes down to though, is hiring the right teachers and the administration, that's very important. And I think right now, I think we've been fairly successful in creating an administration, a core of teachers that are delivering on education here for our students in Monaga.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. I'll get the hang of this chart eventually by the end of the evening. Okay. Next question, we're going to start with Bob, and then Derwin, then Andrea, and then Katie. The question is in two parts again. What do you see as the greatest strengths of the district, and where do you see the greatest, the biggest challenges?
I didn't catch that first part. What is the greatest?
Greatest strength.
Strife?
Strength.
Oh, strife.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm one of those that wear hearing aids. Oh, strength?
Yeah.
Oh! Is that your wife that just?
Yeah. Strength.
Well, one of the biggest strengths that I've noticed is the staff and the administration. They love the kids. They, they love teaching. We got great facilities, and of course, we all know that, you know, we're adding on to, for more. They're updating, as Derwin mentioned, the technologies which are moving forward as, I mean, we can't even keep up with it as fast as it's coming. So, I see that as a lot of plus and a lot of strength. Our, you know, our kids are our strength. We got a lot of kids, you know, that are coming and getting a good education. On the strife, and I want to make sure I got this right, it's not strife, what's the second part?
Challenges.
Challenges?
Yeah.
Oh.
Thank you.
15 seconds. I may not get to it. I think our challenge is, is going to be to maintain what's already here and also to grow it even better. I got to stop. I know. Thank you.
Okay. Derwin, your turn.
I think it all comes down on the strength side. We have strong family values here in Monaga, and I think what that correlates to is good kids. I mean, you can talk to, I have talked to a lot of teachers, and a lot of them say you're not, they cannot believe how well-behaved. I mean, there's always a few situations that arise, but I think ultimately it comes down to the strong family values that are transcended onto our, onto our kids. And then likewise, hitting on the administration staff that we've hired, I mean, there's always a little bit of turnover, but we've got, I think, a good core group of teachers right now with a strong curriculum that hopefully is going to prepare our kids for the future. Challenges, like I touched on earlier, I think technology. Granted, we know we've had the iPads and the computers, and that's something we're supplying for our kids, but I think staying ahead of the curve is going to be the challenge that we have to keep, keep our hand on.
Okay. Andrea?
Derwin touched on what I feel is the greatest strength. I feel like the families and the kids that come into our school district are coming in with a really good, solid foundation for learning. I realize that's not the case in a lot of other school districts, so we're very, very thankful to have such well-behaved, such eager learners in our school district. The greatest challenge that I see is one that touches education, and will always touch education. It has since our grandparents were kids, and I believe it will always be here. And that's trying to figure out and understand what the future holds, and being able to create an educational system that you can use to touch every child as an individual so that they can become efficient adults. Trying to lead the side. Am I side though?
One of our greatest strengths, I think, is our strong community, our sense of family and our family values. Andrea said, same way, but Monaga is a district unlike most districts in Minnesota, and we have great kids. We have wonderful kids who come here and they're taken care of, and that's amazing. Some of our weaknesses, I know right now, our kids can struggle at school simply because there's so many of them trying to fit in this building. And I think right now, we're trying to remedy that, and it'll change hopefully soon.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next question, we'll start with Derwin. Go to Andrea, then Katie, and then Bob. What do you see as the Monaga school board's role and responsibilities?
Ultimately, you start with the hiring process, which starts with the superintendent, the principals, and then from there, they hire the staff, and then we've got final approval on hirings. The other thing is to watch the financial position of the district, making sure we're good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And also, working collegiately with all the other board members to try to all pull in the same direction. I think that's important. I know there've been some challenges in the past, but I think, as Andrea mentioned earlier, that over the last couple of years, I think we've finally kind of coalesced and got some good things going. And just to be professional and be open to input from people in the community and make sure that their, their voices are being heard.
Andrea?
I feel like this question is one that's a pretty clear-cut answer. Derwin pretty much said everything as, as I was writing it, so I'm trying to think, what am I going to say? But our main role is to have the superintendent responsible for making sure that our policy book is up to date, that these are the things we want to do in our school district. Obviously, we have responsibilities of spending money wisely. We have some control over taxes. The biggest thing I've seen from me being on the school board is being able to hear the community, to listen, to understand, to have that back-and-forth communication between school board members and people who have their kids in the district or have their tax dollars going into the district. And being able to match what we do on the board with our community values.
Okay. Katie?
So, our role and responsibilities, I think Derwin and Andrea pretty much said everything I heard. Something new. You know, we are the ultimate, like, I would call it, boss of the school, but we have to, you know, the buck stops here with us, and we have to make those decisions. Sometimes they're hard, and that's okay. And we're also liaisons to the community.
Okay. And Bob?
Well, this is the privilege of going last. I can just say ditto. Everyone that answered, I am in complete agreement with. I would, I would just add that I, I believe that part of the job of the school board, which I'm sure all of the panel here would agree, is we're the goal between, between the community and the administration and the district. You know, in, in a perfect world, every decision we make would please everybody, but unfortunately, it doesn't. And to be able to make the right decisions based on the facts and the information that we have at that time is a big responsibility of the school board. And also, ensuring, you know, this continues to move forward in a very positive way.
All right. Thank you. Next question will be Andrea, Katie, Bob, and Derwin. What are your plans for improving communications with the broader school community, including parents, but also especially those without children that live in the district? And Andrea, you get that first.
Communication is one thing that I felt was really important when I ran for this position four years ago. Being a mother of young kids in the school district, it was a challenge to learn what's going on at school, why do we do this at school, what are the plans for the next couple of years? And I feel that since I've been on the board, whether it's, it might not be me, I think that everybody works on improving communication, but I feel like it has improved over the past four years. My plans for making it better, I always say that my phone number is in the book. It's under my name. I'm always listening. I'm always willing to take people's feedback into the district. I guess I had my, my phone, my phone number's in the book.
Okay. Katie?
The plans to improving, over the last couple of years, we've done a lot of listening sessions. A large part of that was Andrea's doing, and she did, has done a phenomenal job with that. I've seen a big change, a huge change actually, from when I first started on the board, coming to meetings and being greeted at the door, pretty hostile, to coming in and actually be able to get work done. It's been, it's been an amazing change over the last couple of years, and I just hope that it continues. And I think one of the ways we can have help it continue is through more listening sessions. And just the fact that we're approachable people. And being approachable, I've, I've had many people call me. I've always returned a call if they've left a message, or emailed, or just to be, just to be open.
Okay. Bob?
Again, I agree with what the other two said. I, I think it boils down to relationships in the, in the community, building relationships, communication, being able to listen to the community's concerns, their positive ones and their negative ones, and to be listening and then bring that information to the board, you know, in our meetings and discuss it. But just, you know, being a part of the community as a school board member and listening and trying to do what's best for the school and the students.
Thank you. Derwin?
Well, as right now, the school, the district has a school website. When we start talking about communications, you're trying to find tools that, how do we meet the needs of different sectors of the community? I know the superintendent has a newsletter that he also writes in his local newspaper occasionally. But the main thing is they have information readily available, I think. And like Andrea and, as other people have mentioned, everybody's available. Pick up the phone if you got an issue, call. One thing I've heard on the radio, and it's a couple of school districts, I can't remember, Bertha Hewitt, or maybe Henning, or whatever, but every week, they have a little five-minute snippet of what's going on in their school, and that might be something we might want to take a look at in the future. Just have a little radio time where everybody that, I think it's on K-106, what, you know, might be something we can look, look at in the future.
Okay. Next question will be Katie, Bob, Derwin, and then Andrea. And the question is, what do you see as the key to a successful contract negotiation Katie, you get to start.
I think what the key to a successful contract negotiation is being open to everyone coming to the table and offering what is fair, equitable, and be firm. I've learned a lot from the last go-around. It was my first negotiations. And, and I think that in the end, we were very firm in what we offered, and we gave them, they had a, you know, they got a better salary in the end, but we also had some things in return that was good for our district.
Okay. Bob?
The keys to a successful negotiation, probably in one word, I would say compromise. Both sides need to come to the table, understanding. Derwin mentioned early, a part of the school board is being fiscally responsible for the taxpayers' money. And so, to come to the negotiations on both sides, from the administration educators to the school board, and to civilly hammer out an agreement that everybody can agree upon to a certain extent, and then move forward from there.
Okay. Derwin?
Well, there's always two components that come into play when you start talking contract negotiations. It's money and language. And typically, the way the process works, since I've been here on the school board, is we always wait for the teachers to bring their, teachers or any other bar in the unit to bring their proposal to the table. And then what we try to do is be upfront and open with them, what, what can the district afford to pay? I mean, where are we sitting financially? We need to be competitive with surrounding districts, but we also, like Bob hit on again, we need to be fiscally responsible. And I've been through a few of them, and I think at the end of the day, we're out here somewhere, and you're always wobbling to the middle, and eventually, hopefully, everybody's happy when you wobble to the table. But ultimately, contracts need to be settled, and I like the way Katie put it, you need to be firm sometimes.
Okay. Andrea?
Well, this last round of contract negotiations was interesting for me. The first contract negotiations I was involved with was very hands-off. I was at the table, but I did not speak. The previous, the, the most recent contract negotiations, I was the lead negotiator. So, that was a very big change. I used to think that contract negotiations involved compromise. That, that was always my big thing. But I don't believe that anymore. I believe it's collaboration, especially after going through contract negotiations and being a lead. Especially after going through contract negotiations and being a lead negotiator, I've learned that listening is one of the best things you can do. Understanding where the other people are coming from and what they are looking for as their highest value is not always the same as what the district wants. And while we are trying to come to the same point in the end, we oftentimes can get there in a different way than we had imagined.
Okay, thank you. All right, this time we'll start with Bob, and Derwin, and Andrea, and last Katie. The question is, I noticed in last Saturday's Enterprise that the board passed a resolution supporting a universal free meals program. Do you support this resolution, and how do you see it benefiting your students? We're starting with Bob first.
If I'm not mistaken, we have free meals here in Monaga. Personally, I'm kind of against it. You know, it needs to be here for those that need it. But there are families that probably can afford to pay lunch or send lunch with their kids. I knew that they said that it was, you know, free lunch for everybody, but eventually, somebody's going to pay, you know, and, but, you know, it's good for our students that need it, and I am, I'm for that because there are, there are families that are struggling and that benefit from the free breakfasts and the free lunches.
Okay, Derwin?
I have a resolution that was brought up. I did vote in favor of it. It was more of a resolution that was going to be brought to the MSBA convention, I think, Delegate Assembly. But ultimately, it comes down to making sure we have a safety net out there so every kid has the opportunity to get a square, solid meal. I think hungry kids do not, nor as well as well-fed kids, so we don't want to disadvantage anybody. Granted, there's budgetary concerns that are part of this, but when you look at the big picture, the big pie of all the money that's spent in our district, the actual budget for the lunch program, I think, is just a sliver of the total budget. So I would rather be in favor of trying to create a situation such as Superintendent Loewen has, that all kids get a good, solid meal.
Okay, Andrea?
The universal free meals program was a resolution that I brought to the school board. This is something that I've been working on, and I'm going to bring it to Minnesota School Board Association's Delegate Assembly in December. My thoughts behind this is, there are many school districts, even in our state, that do not have to fill out paperwork for the free reduced lunch. The money that comes in for people who qualify for free reduced lunch comes in as money that we can spend on education. And so my thought was twofold, that if we can eliminate the paperwork that comes with what everybody calls the free reduced lunch form, then we can offer a free lunch program for all kids. Whether they're needing the money or whether they don't need the money, I don't think that was really the issue I was looking at. I was looking at being able to provide meals for all students. And I know I'm trying to, I'm cut off, being cut off, but I just wanted to finish that.
You've got another sentence, go ahead.
Because it is our responsibility to create adults who can fend for themselves, and I think providing them with good meals while they're kids helps us to get to that point faster.
Okay, Katie?
I did also vote in favor of that resolution. I think that those that, that, those that that resolution blesses the most could not be seen behind a podium flunking their fists and saying there's something wrong with it. And but as a reminder to our parents, it is a parent decision, and if it conflicts with your morals, you don't have to fill it out. But I did vote in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see if we can do this like a 45-second one because we've hit on part of this before. And we'll start with Derwin, go to Andrea, Katie, and then Bob. There's been many changes in technology in the schools over the last couple of years. Most of the students here, I understand, have iPads, and they use them for homework, and I would assume some textbooks are on them. What do you think the policy should be for students who do not have access to the internet at home? And how can the school address this inequality?
I don't know the number for sure, but I'm assuming there's a few kids that would meet that criteria of not having it at home. But I think we've opened up this library in the mornings, and I think there might be some free times and a couple of labs that they can access the computer or the internet on. As far as the number, I don't know if it's that great, to be honest with you, because they're actually, most of the homework is being done in the classroom when they're utilizing these iPads and these computers. And I'm almost positive there is some time set aside in the library before school starts where they can actually get on the internet.
Andrea?
Yeah, I'm not really sure how to answer this question. First of all, students in grades seven through 12, I believe, have access to bringing their technology home. The younger kids do not. So for those older kids who may have homework that requires them to be online, I know there have been some policies that have been brought to Minnesota School Board Association's Delegate Assembly that would address this inequality. They are providing some kind of funds for people to have internet access at home. However, I don't think that's really the answer to the question. I think in our school district, that kids aren't required to use them at home. And I think that they're able to get most of their homework done, any projects they have, even without using the internet at home.
Okay, Katie?
I just, I think our school district gives our kids ample time to get their homework done, mostly in school. Sometimes they have larger projects that they need to bring home, but usually that doesn't require the internet. I was one of those parents who let my kids bring their technology home up until this year. So I guess how we dealt with it was, I guess they got to use my computer, but they weren't allowed to bring home their devices because I couldn't monitor them. So, I guess that I just, I think our school gives our kids plenty of time.
Okay, Bob?
Well, I have to be very honest with you. I'm uneducated in this matter. I do not know the percentage of people that, in the community, that don't have internet access. But I agree with Derwin that it's probably very limited. I've subbed a few times in the Monaga School District so far this year, and in the classes that I've subbed, I've noticed that the teachers have always left time for the students to, you know, be on their iPads and stuff and to do their work and stuff. So with the other people's comments, that there's probably time in school for them to get their work done.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Andrea, Katie, Bob, and Derwin. Okay, given the fact that many schools are competing for the most qualified teachers and other staff, how do you propose to attract and retain your qualified staff here? Andrea, you start.
The last round that we did with contract negotiations, we focused on this question a lot. What is it that teachers are coming here for? Are they looking for salary? Are they looking for good students? Are they looking for benefits? What kind of competition do we have surrounding us in other school districts? So one of the things we did during the last round of contract negotiations is to give a bump in salary and really address some of the things that the negotiators brought to the table. I know we've mentioned before that we have good families and good students, and that definitely helps to get teachers. But one of the things that we're trying really hard to do is to really listen at contract negotiations and see what they're asking for.
Okay, Katie?
No, Andrea touched on that, but in order to attract more qualified candidates, we did up the starting wage. I know that was one of the reasons why we were able to get more candidates for job openings that we've had, and we were able to get some better qualified applicants, which was great for, great for our school, great for our kids. You know, before, they would always talk about years past. They'd have a job opening and maybe only get a couple of candidates or get no one to, no one who was qualified. And so this year, I think we've seen a big change in that, and that was great for us.
Okay, Bob?
Well, I can tell you that I am at a disadvantage on this panel because being the outsider, I've never dealt with what the other panelists have dealt with. I think the thing is to look at teachers' character, their passion for wanting to teach, and then doing what we can as a school board and being fiscally responsible. I hear them say they bump salaries up and, you know, have done other things as a school board to attract teachers and keep teachers in the community and stuff. And I would be willing to work right along with them. For me, I know that it'll be a learning process.
And Derwin?
When it comes to a rural district like Monaga, I mean, there's going to be a certain percentage of teachers that just aren't going to come to Monaga. We just don't have the amenities that the big city provides. But some things that are to our benefit are, you know, the Lakes area here. I mean, we've got a good school, climate referring, referencing the teachers we do have. So their peers would be, I think, positive. You know, it always comes down to money again, you know. We, I think, has been touched on at the last negotiations. We did do a comparison of the other districts, and our salaries are very comparable to Parker Rapids, Sabika, what, you know, some of the towns that we might be competing against. But ultimately, like I said, Monaga and this area just has to be a good fit for, you know, there's great teachers that want to come to small rural communities, but, you know, we're still competing with the big city.
Okay, and the next question, we'll start with Katie, then Bob, then Derwin, and last Andrea. According to the Minnesota Report Card from the Department of Education, Monaga breaks about, with 66% of their kids proficient in math, 61% in reading, and 47% in science. What are the policies that you as a school board can help to change that would improve these scores?
To improve these scores?
Yeah. I assume every school district wants to improve, no matter which area they're in?
Well, we, we're trying to kind of move away from that this year in that we had asked our parents if, we gave them the form if they wanted to have their kids partake in this test or not. So if they didn't partake in the test, they would have four additional days of learning for our students with their teachers. I see that we're 66, you know, over 50% good in reading and math, 47% in science. I think a lot of that has to do with space. We don't have room for labs. We don't have room. Our kids are doing science projects in the hallways. So if we want to, if that score is really important to us, and even if it isn't, I think we need to concentrate in science because science is going to help our kids in the long run too. A lot of our jobs nowadays have a lot to do with a scientific background. So it would be great if we did the options.
And Bob?
Well, to begin with, hearing these numbers for the first time, Monaga's in the top one-third or close to it, so that's a good sign. You know, I'm not sure, you know, more opportunities for math and science, labs. I haven't toured the school or what they have planned for the new section as far as, you know, classrooms and things of this nature and stuff. But just continue to work. I know that the board in the past has, you know, passed things and, you know, brought in teachers and math teachers. And, you know, these are important subjects, you know, for every student to know and to grasp and stuff. There's always room for improvement, as you said, and I'm sure the board is striving to increase those numbers.
Okay, Derwin?
One thing our principals are always doing is monitoring test scores and whatnot. But, you know, testing is subjective in the sense that a kid might be having a bad day or whatever. So like Katie had mentioned, we're opting out, or they can opt out on the state standards test if they want to. But ultimately, the curriculum has to be based on what works best for the kids. And, you know, the math scores and the reading scores, like Bob mentioned, you know, when they're a little better than average, but average isn't good enough. So how do you, how do you improve on that? I think the focus is to find out what better tools can be provided to make a better learning environment.
Andrea?
I have to agree with a lot of what has been said, so I'm just going to continue. I think that looking at students and individual growth is more important than looking at school test scores as a whole. I believe that Minnesota has really high test scores to begin with, so we're comparing really good students with really good students. And when we're looking at students and individual growth, we're looking at what they've done in a year compared to, instead of comparing them to the rest of the state. I believe that helping all of the students will be retaining good teachers and doing more teacher evaluations, and that's something that our administration's been working on.
Thank you. All right, this one, we'll start with Bob, then go to Derwin, Andrea, then Katie. What's your position on open enrollment students?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I think a couple of weeks ago in the paper that Monaga closed open enrollment because they were at capacity. I am not against open enrollment, but I do think that our first priority is to those that live within the school district and that attend the Monaga school areas. And we need to make sure that we take care of those that are within the boundaries of the school district first, to make sure that they have the opportunities to come. And then if enrollment allows and finances allow to open up at some point in the future, open enrollment for students, I would possibly be in favor of that.
Derwin?
Open enrollment right now in Monaga is capped. It's capped at 88 students per grade level. And that means if the student count is below the 88, if a person or a student wants to open enrollment, there's room, we allow them in. Ultimately, the best, if you look at learning environment and the financial aspect, a class size of 20 to 22 kids is ideal. And if we get to the point where with this new addition, if there's room to maybe bump that up a little bit, that might be a possibility. But right now, we want to stay focused on that 88 because I think once we get the extra room, as Katie mentioned, we are kind of bursting, it seems, down that wall for a better learning environment. But you have to recognize the history of Monaga. There's, I think, two or three generations of kids that have been open enrollment in Monaga. So this is something that dates way back.
Andrea?
The open enrollment discussion is really interesting when you look at it at a statewide level. I've had the opportunity to talk with many school board members from around the state. And most school districts compete to see how many open enrollment students they can get. We are not in that position here. We don't recruit open enrollment students. We don't run ads in the paper looking for open enrollment students. As has been mentioned before, we have capped open enrollment based on how many students can efficiently fit in a classroom, how we can financially, fiscally responsibly handle students in the classroom. I'm not opposed to open enrollment as a method of getting students in the school. However, we are pretty full in here.
Okay, Katie?
So we are pretty full. Our school board did, they opted not to open enrollment for a couple of grades, even though they were not at the cap. So we did, we did make that decision. And even though that being said, I do believe that all kids have worth and all children bring value to our school. that all kids have worth and all children bring value to our school.
Okay. And I think, I'm gonna squeak in one more question, just because. Okay. And we're gonna start with Derwin, go to Andrea, Katie, and then Bob gets to finish up on that. What's the name of the last book you read? The school teacher in me just couldn't resist that one.
I also gotta go back a ways. I'm not, I don't, my forte is reading newspapers and magazines, so, I mean, I faithfully read the Fargo Forum, and there's a couple magazines or periodicals I do get, but I think the last book I read was in college, and I can't remember what it was. And that was because I had it.
Yeah. Okay. Andrea?
Well, last Thursday evening, I spent my evening in the ER with my six-year-old, and I read from front to back with her a poem book called "Inviting Dragons to Dinner", or something like that. It was a very, very long book. But for myself, the last book, the book I'm currently reading is called "Opportunity", it's by Evan Pagan, and it is all about understanding, understanding how to see opportunities coming, how to capitalize on opportunities in all areas of your life, so it's a very good book. I recommend it.
Katie?
Last book I read was Snuggle Puppy of Mine. I could just tell you it from Adam if you would like me to. It's been all my kids' favorite, favorite book, so I read that one daily. Right now, I'm currently reading a book by Tony Evans called "Watch Your Mouth".
And Bob?
Finally. An easy question for me. Books are my life. As a pastor, they're my tools, just like a carpenter would strap on a belt with his hammer. The last book I read, of course, this morning, I read my Bible every day, the last book I read was First Peter this morning. The last secular book I finished also today was "The Fourth Turning: An American Prophecy" by Strauss and Howe, two college sociologists. It's a history-based book. It's a college-based book, and it took me about three, three months to read it, because I had to look up a lot of words. But those were the two books that I finished today, reading.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have wrap-up statements. We'll start with Derwin, and Bob, then Katie, and then Andrea will finish up. So two minutes each, right, Lorraine? Okay. So, Derwin, you can start first.
Well, in closing, I'd just like to say, I think we've got a bright future ahead of us here in Monaga. There's a lot of positive things happening. I think one of the catalysts moving forward is a new addition, is gonna open up some opportunities that we haven't been able to utilize in this facility, based on student population. This district is solid financially. We've got leadership at the top. I think we've got a well-working board that kind of, granted, there's some disagreements at times, you know, the vote isn't always 6-0, but I think there's good conversations on different issues. And I think it all comes down to staying focused on our kids. I mean, that's ultimately why I think we're all on this board and why we're running for this position, because that is our future. And I'm passionate about education. I've got two kids that graduated from Monaga, and both of them went on to college, and both of them have two degrees. So you know, Lorraine and I are very focused to make sure that you give kids the best opportunity as you possibly can.
Thank you. Rob, and Bob?
Oh, my goodness. Well, I'm very impressed by the people on this board. They definitely have more knowledge than me. All I can tell you is, as Derwin said, I'm compassionate about education and our kids' education, and all I can say is that I pledge that I will, if elected, that I will work hard with whoever is on the board for what is best overall for the community and mostly our students. As Derwin said, it may not always be a 6-0 vote, and there'll be discussions, but hopefully, together as a board, the consensus is, let's do what is best for our students.
Thank you. Katie?
I just wanna thank you ladies for putting this on again. My second, second time in a year. And I just wanna say for everyone that it's been an honor to serve our community. It's been a pretty amazing last two years, and I hope to do that again. We have an amazing school, terrific kids, great community and parents, and just thank you.
And Andrea, you get to finish up.
All right. As I've spent the last four years on this board, I've learned the responsibilities and time commitment that this position requires. It's a tough job that I believe in. I believe in education. I believe in our students. I believe in our administration and staff. And most of all, I believe in the political process that puts community members such as myself, who really know nothing about education, know nothing about schooling kids, until you get here. I think it's a really important position, and I've really been honored to be here. Thanks to the ladies here for putting on this forum, and for everybody else for coming to me.
And thank you to the candidates for tonight, and the audience members for attending. And you're welcome to stay and help with the coffee and cookies and treats, and ask more questions if you need to.